Good evening and welcome to the March 2nd, 2016, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll declare the meeting open. We have nine public hearings on the agenda tonight, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately one acre located at 1710 East Northfield Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to RM-16. Murfreesboro East Housing Associates One is applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight is the property located at 1710 East Northfield Boulevard. It's the northernmost acre of the parcel that is currently developed with the, what was formerly known as the King's Crossing Apartment Complex and is now known as the Chariot Point Apartment Complex. You'll see it's the property colored in orange along the south side of East Northfield Boulevard. The property is split zoned. This northernmost acre that is colored in orange is zoned RS-15, but the majority of the apartment complex tract, as you can see here, is zoned RM-16. All the structures with apartment units are located on the portion of the property zoned RM-16, and the only thing that is located on the portion of the property zoned RS-15, besides the entrance drive off Northfield Boulevard, is the complex swimming pool. Now, the applicants have recently purchased the property, so a new owner has purchased the property and would like to make some upgrades to the existing apartment complex, specifically the construction of a new leasing office, a trash compactor, a playground, a mail kiosk, and the renovation of the existing leasing office into a clubhouse. Now, the proposed leasing office would be located in the area that is currently zoned RS-15, and because that's zoned single-family, the leasing office, which is a building that is accessory to a multifamily use, would not be permitted in the RS-15 zoning district. So accordingly, the applicants have made a request to rezone this northernmost acre of the property to RM-16 in order to permit the construction of the leasing office. The leasing office will actually serve to, in staff's opinion, create a better presentation to East Northfield Boulevard, and to that end, the applicants have actually submitted a before-and-after photographic rendering. This is the subject property looking, or looking at the subject property from Northfield Boulevard. And you can see the pool is visible from Northfield Boulevard, nothing to provide any privacy for the pool, and then the proposed leasing office, which would be located in front of the pool facing Northfield Boulevard. Now, just as a side note, this rendering of the building is not the final rendering. There will be a door and some other architectural features to give it a better presentation towards Northfield Boulevard, but this is just to provide you a general idea of what the property would look like were the property to be rezoned to RM-16 and the new leasing office to be constructed. To give you an idea of what is around the subject property, directly to the south of the acre in question is the balance of the apartment tract zoned RM-16. To the southwest of the subject property is the Brighton subdivision, which consists of mostly duplexes, triplexes, and quadrplexes. It's zoned RM-12. On both the east and west sides of the subject property is zoned RS-15. The property to the west is undeveloped, and the property to the east is developed with a Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall. And to the northwest of the subject property across East Northfield Boulevard is the Quail Run Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is zoned RS-15. And then across Northfield Boulevard to the northeast is the Rutherford Boulevard Church of Christ. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this rezoning request. We'll need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council regarding this request. Mr. Jason Bruyet from Little John Engineering, let me see if he is present, in case you have any questions for him. I do not see him or a representative of the developer. At any rate, I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay. Mr. Young.
Mr. Blomley, will there be adequate parking for the people that pull into this area and want to rent the apartments while they're, you know, the 30 minutes or hour it takes to rent an apartment?
Yes, sir. First, overall, they meet the parking requirements, and they'll actually be adding, there'll be a net increase in parking spaces and a net increase in accessible parking spaces as well, but they are going to be adding some parking across the driveway, in addition to the parking that's on the side of the driveway where the pool and the leasing office will be located.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Okay. If you've never been to one of our public hearings before, I'll briefly go over how we conduct them. Each one of our public hearings that we have tonight, we'll announce it, we'll talk about it, we'll ask questions about it, then we'll open the public hearing. Once opened the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward to the microphone if you care to choose to speak either for or against the proposal. When you come to the microphone, please clearly state your name and give your address for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, because we have quite a few people here that might want to speak tonight. Make all your questions and comments to the Planning Commission, not of the members of the audience, and if you do have questions, the staff will make note of your questions, and we'll try to get those answered by the staff at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing for this first proposal at this time and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Anybody at all? Okay, in that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Blomley, is this all in good order?
Yes, sir, we believe so.
Move for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is a zoning application for approximately 5.5 acres located along Conference Center Boulevard and Avenue Way to be rezoned from PCD to Commercial Highway and Commercial Highway to Vasari Lofts PRD, TDK Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good night.
Good night, good evening, and thank you. The second public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request for property that's shown on the map that you have been provided. Property is identified in the color purple, and it is located along Conference Center Boulevard, Gresham Park Drive, and Avenue Way, so you can see that it's, on all its sides, has a road frontage. This property has two zoning districts on it, so it makes it look like it's two separate parcels, but it's actually one parcel. The property is zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District, and CH, Highway Commercial District. You can see the surrounding zoning, zone districts are CH as well. The hatch pattern on the map represents the Gateway Design Overlay District, so this parcel for which you're being asked to study is zoned PCD, CH, and GDO-1. The change is to ask you to consider changing the PCD zone and the CH zone to a planned development, to a PRD, Planned Residential District. This property will remain in the Gateway Design Overlay District, so any future review of any plans would require the typical procedure of going to initial and final design review before the Planning Commission. The current PCD zoning I thought you might be interested in is for a seven-story, 129-room Hyatt Place Hotel, which we approved several years back. There is, that application is not looking to move forward, and we knew there would be sometime in the future that a change would be requested, to change the zoning either back to CH or for some other type of use. The proposed use is not like anything else we have in Murfreesboro. It's very unique, and because of that, our recommendation is that they request a planned development, PRD. In a few moments, I'll invite the design team up to present to you the details of the planned development, but just to give you a broad overview, this property is approximately 5.5 acres, and they're proposing to allow a maximum of 203 dwelling units on the 5.5 acres. That's a density of 37 dwelling units per acre. If you compare that to the mixed-use district, which is located further down Medical Center Parkway, the mixed-use district allows 25 dwelling units per acre. You can see this is significantly above the highest density that we have in Murfreesboro, but I think when you look at the project, you'll see that it's quite different. They believe, and you are familiar with this area, and we have referred to it for years as the hospitality campus, primarily for the types of services that are provided here, specifically hotels and other type services, and so we question the applicant on why they would choose a place like this, the hospitality campus, for their proposed planned development. And they believe that this presents them with the ability to walk certain uses that residents would really appreciate, and I think that they're going to expound upon that a little bit further. We have included a copy of the program book in your electronic agenda, and we should have carried one to you, and they're calling this Vasari Loft, so the book that corresponds with is Vasari Loft. You can see that they are proposing some parking spaces within the public right-of-way, and those public right-of-way parking spaces add an ambiance to the site, but they are not counted in their parking calculations, because anything located within public right-of-way is available for any member of the public to park in and cannot be restricted to certain users, and I just wanted to point that out to you. So as we've mentioned in the past, the planned development approach and the zoning ordinance allows a specific plan to be made for property that's different than our zoning ordinance, and part of that process is that they have to identify any exceptions to the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations that they may request. I mentioned before that the density of 37 dwelling units per acre is higher than our zoning districts allow, and so they're, of course, requesting an exception to allow 37 dwelling units per acre. Also on Chart 25 is a breakdown of the parking calculations, and they are requesting an exception to the minimum number of parking spaces that we require, and I think their justification, which Mr. Taylor will go into later, is that this is further from the campus, and they do not expect, although they wouldn't restrict it from being university students living here, they expect it to be people, I think, with a higher income, and as we know, students typically can't afford these types of areas, so they're not anticipating the typical student style apartments, which would have a higher parking calculation. And then the third exception is that they have some spaces, they've labeled tandem spaces, and I think this is the second time this year that we've had somebody ask for tandem spaces. The other times was the Springfield Apartments on Manson Pike, and so what these tandem spaces are, are parking spaces located directly in front of garage, so the zoning ordinance doesn't allow parking spaces, except for in single-family residences. They don't allow the spaces that you have to drive through to get to another space to count as minimum parking spaces, because they are proposing to allow these tandem parking spaces to count toward their parking calculations. So they will have garage spaces, and then the building will overhang over the space behind the garage, and that's where the tandem space will be, and you can see that in the program book. Architectural renderings are provided on Page 17 for you to take a look at. This is what they're proposing. You can see that they are facing the units, giving it a strong presence to the street, and you can see that they've lined those units along the streets with a higher functioning classification, those where we expect to have more traffic, and they have parking behind those. This will, of course, be required to go through the initial and final design review process, but if you see something in this program book that you don't think is consistent with GDO standards, it would be appropriate to tell them to go ahead and modify those renderings. And if you like it, of course, it would be appropriate to tell them that. At this time, I'd like to invite the design team to the lectern to go through the details of this plan. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them. So are members of the team, and the owner is here as well, if you have any questions from him. You should conduct a public hearing after the presentation, and forward a recommendation to City Council.
My name is Rob Mulcham with SEC. I'm here with Ross Bradley tonight with TDK Construction, the applicant, in regards to our rezoning request for planned residential development for Vasari Loft at the avenue. Get a little specifics as to where the site is in relationship to the city. This is the avenues area along I-24. You can see the site there centrally located. It is just to the north of Embassy Suites Hotel and Conference Center. Pull it a little bit more. You can see Embassy Suites there to the south and east. Site is also surrounded by a few other hotels and some retail. There's Embassy Suites. And the recently opened Lazy Boy is across the street on the other side of Avenue Way. This is a view of the site looking from Conference Center Boulevard into the site, and this is across the site looking back towards Embassy Suites. Currently, as Margaret Lamb pointed out, the current zoning on the property is two different classifications. One is a PCD and one is a Commercial Highway, the other one's a Planned Commercial Development. The plan itself, this is modeled for an upscale urban apartment community. It's going to be 203 apartment units. All the units we view for rent will be comprised of two buildings. One building will be four stories tall, the other building will be five stories tall. Each building will have a rooftop garden area, which is an outdoor area for relaxation on the rooftop. The plan, each of the units will comprise, will be comprised of three different unit types. There will be a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom unit type with inside each of the buildings. And there will be also, part of the way to complement the architectural style, this is urban style, we'll be doing some urban streetscapes along Gresham Park Drive and along Conference Center Boulevard. The, you're looking at the screen, I want to point out a few things really quick. The rooftop gardens are noted here in the darker green. This is larger of the two on the corner of Avenue Way and Gresham Park Drive. The smaller one is over here on the longer building over here at the corner of Gresham Park Drive and Conference Center Boulevard. This is an aerial perspective of what the plan is intended to look like once completed. This is a view looking towards the building, as if you were on Avenue Way elevated above the roadway, just at the intersection of Gresham Park Drive. This is looking directly at the four-story building. You can see there on the top of the, on the top of the building there, on the main part here across the facade, is the rooftop garden on the fourth floor overlooking the outdoor formal plaza, the entry formal plaza right there on the corner, with all the hardscape and such, adding this urban flavor and character to the development, along with the tandem, along with the on-street parking spaces associated with the project that will be added to Gresham Park Drive, along, all the way down the road on Gresham Park Drive. Some of the other development standards, sidewalks will be provided throughout the development, linking the residences back to the urban streetscape, and then also back to the infrastructure already provided throughout the avenues and around Embassy Suites for our residents to walk around down to the avenues, you know, go shopping, go restaurants, you know, and enjoy the, enjoy the community that they're being involved in. Development signage will be set at the two corners on Avenue Way. We'll also be including any of our open spaces that we're planning for this. Project will be landscaped, sodded, and irrigated. Solid waste will be collected in a trash collector from a private hauler that's located in the parking lot, you know, furthest away from the residences. And mail kiosks will be inside the building, so they'll be securely inside the building. As Margaret Lamb pointed out, we are requesting a modification in regards to the requirements for parking. We're actually looking at 280 surface parking spots, 27 garage spaces, and these garage spaces will be in conjunction with what we were talking about, the tandem spaces, which are directly behind those spaces. Those garage spaces will be rented with a renter that chooses to want to have a garage, and that tandem space will be associated with that renter and that garage space, so they're actually getting two parking spaces for their unit. Like I said earlier, we'll also be creating 17 on-street parking spaces along Gresham Park Drive that will add a, add a flavor to the urban character of the streetscape that'll allow for residents and visitors to park along there, but it'll also be, as Margaret Lamb pointed out, it is a public space, so anybody that's coming to use the Conference Center or anything else in the area can use those spaces to park as well. The garage spaces I talked about before, the garage doors will be decorative, even though they will be recessed below the building, they'll have a decorative look to them, and the garages will also be strictly for vehicular use only, will be part of the restrictive covenants that's put in with the renters' agreement when they go through that. Talk a little bit about the tandem and the tuck-under garage spaces that we were talking about, and these illustrations you see on the, on the screen now. The yellow is the actual garage space that is fully underneath the building itself. The tandem space behind it is not fully enclosed, it is just, it's an open-air space, but it's covered by, predominantly by the building structure above it, and then potentially some kind of structure extending past where the actual edge of the elevation of the building is to finish covering that space, so it is a covered outdoor parking space, not a fully enclosed garage space. Talk about some of the building materials. We're looking at brick, stone, also a fiber cement board, a fiber cement board and batten, and another product called fiber cement panels in order to portray the urban character and flavor of the architecture that we're presenting tonight. I'll go through a few slides here. This is all the different elevations of the building, just to kind of give you an idea of what the urban flavor, the colors and, you know, and patterns and the elevational changes that we have for the building. This is the four-story building where, it's on the, I'm sorry, this is a five-story building, which is, this is the corner unit, the corner of the building at the corner of Gresham Park Drive and Conference Way, is if you were standing and looking from Embassy Suites back towards the development. Subsequent slides here, all the different elevations along, this is the elevation along Gresham Park Drive, and the image at the bottom is actually the backside of that building, where you can see the recessed garage doors located along the bottom edge of the building here. This is the elevation along Conference Center Boulevard. The top is the actual facades facing the street. The other side is the garage, I mean, the elevations on the backside. This is the four-story building, as if you were standing at the corner of Avenue Way and Gresham Park Drive. This is where we talked about with the aerial perspective, showing the rooftop garden area located all across the, from the fourth, top of the fourth floor over here, and the entranceway, you can see they'll do some creative signage in regards to Vasari Loft as you enter the building itself. This is the image of the elevations that'll be facing onto Avenue Way, and the rear of this, this will be the back of the residential area as it faces onto the pool area that I'll talk a little bit more here in a minute about, and this is the elevation along Gresham Park Drive, and subsequently the rear of that. Want to talk a little about the unit, the apartment units themselves. As I said earlier, there's three different types of models that'll be included in this, a one, two, and three bedroom. This is a, the one-bedrooms will be as low as 500 square feet, so more or less a studio-type of apartments complex. This is a two-bedroom model, kind of give you a little feel of how the layout is in regards to the, you know, the kitchenettes and the balconies and such. Moving your way up to the three-bedroom, which is, you know, 1,200 square feet or plus, or greater in regards to that unit. Some of the amenities that I talked about earlier, and talk about them now, is this is the rooftop gardens. This, like I said, this is the bigger of the two located at the corner of Avenue Way and Gresham Park Drive. Associated with these spaces will be outdoor eating areas, you know, relaxation lounge chairs, you know, a little, you know, like a little bar area kind of stuff like that. This can be used for individual private functions, or it can be used for, you know, community events as well. There'll also be an indoor recreational facility that will be adjacent to the outdoor pool. It'll be more of an urban-style pool as well. Another one of the amenities will be a dog park or a dog run located along Avenue Way for those residents that have pets, will be able to take them outside and let them, you know, utilize that space outside and enjoy it without getting, getting away from themselves that haven't had a, lesioning a leash. Streetscapes and landscaping, want to talk a little about that in regards to the urban character. Looking, just a little quick diagram is the, what we're looking for along Gresham Park Drive. The intent here is to create a hardscape from the back of curb inwards towards the buildings, so that you have direct access on a paved surface from the cars parked along Gresham Park, where we're adding the new parallel, I mean, the, yeah, the parallel spaces along Gresham Park Drive. Will incorporate street trees and tree islands along that, and then on the backside of those trees, we'll have an eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk for pedestrians to stroll about between, you know, for some residents, they can use it for a jogging trail, or even the connectivity to the rest of the features in the avenues area. And then between that sidewalk and the building will be about an eight-foot strip for landscaping that will dress up the landscaping along the foundation to help kind of separate the pedestrian, I mean, the public area from the private area. Currently, the site has some existing streetlights. They are in conjunction with the avenue and the Embassy Suites area. We'll be utilizing these around the remainder of the site along the periphery. This is a, kind of a perspective as to what the view will look like along Conference Center Boulevard. This will be a little bit softer of an urban streetscape, it'll be more of a, you know, the long linear green tree lawn area, but again, we'll have the eight-foot-wide sidewalk for pedestrians strolling around the outside of the project. And then in regards to the parking area at the back of the site, we will be utilizing the same kind of parking screening that the Embassy Suites uses to screen their parking from Gresham Park Drive and Avenue Way. This is a very, this really does a very good job at, you know, screening away the parking that you barely even know there's a parking lot on the other side, utilizing a heavy dose of evergreen shrubs and trees to really drown that out all year round, and then supplementing in some, you know, you know, perennials and other such to give it some flavor and color during the summer months. And this is another view, I want to show you guys really quick. This is a view looking as if you were standing at the entrance to Embassy Suites, looking back at the, at the complex. This is the five-story unit. The smaller outdoor areas up here on that side, and again, the hard plaza entranceway to the complex itself. With that, I'll answer any questions, and like I said, Mr. Ross Bradley with TDK is here to answer any questions as well.
Mr. Young.
Rob, the Gresham Park Drive on-street parking, is that going to be public parking?
Yes, it'll be public parking.
With any kind of time limit on that parking?
Well, something we'll have to work out. I don't know if there's any requirements that we're required to do on that.
Parking management would make that.
And I don't know, Margaret Lamb.
That would be a city decision. It would be something that our transportation department would have to decide, and that our police department would enforce. This would be public improvements paid for by a private developer, but they would be public, so it would be publicly available. There's no way that they could restrict parking here to just Vasari Loft residents. It could be anybody who chooses to park, but they would be public.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you speak a little more to the thought process in reference, or more of an argument with respects to the number of parking spaces per unit?
Mr. Bradley has told me that in previous, in other projects that use this for, that use this, this model for, they've come to find that the, the two-bedroom model, or even the three-bedroom model, the owners of those don't subsequently have more than maybe one or maybe two cars in regards to that. So from the bedroom standpoint, in relationship with the car ratio, they've come to find with projects they've done in similar places, that that ratio is actually lower. That's why they're asking, that's why we're providing a little bit lower than what the actual requirements are for the zoning ordinance. So they've kind of already used this model before, and they've kind of seen reflectively what's going on in regards to the number of cars versus the number of, you know, bedrooms in relationship to the units that they have inside the complex.
You may want to talk about the breakdown of units and how that relates to it. Are one-bedroom units have a higher parking ratio per bedroom than the two and three? So 1.5 spaces, which is rounded up, is required for one-bedrooms, and how many one-bedrooms or studios do you have?
We've only got, that's the, it's the highest quantity, it's 106 of those, so you're required...
More than half of them, I think, are one-bedroom.
For the one-bedroom.
And then for two or three bedrooms, it's 1.1 per bedroom, so a two-bedroom would be 2.2 or 3.3. And Mr. Bradley, you may want to come up if you have some additional information to provide about that. I have a simple question.
Thank you for, for taking the time to listen to us today. We're excited about this development. We really see two different market segments that lease this apartment type of product, either baby boomers or millennials, and typically in both cases, especially with, with your baby boomers, they'll rent a two-bedroom, which we almost have 50% ones and 50% twos in this. I think the whole project has maybe six, six, three bedrooms for the whole project, so you can see the, the small number of three bedrooms that we're projecting. The two-bedrooms, a lot of times what we see, I just, I just left another project this morning that we did a ribbon cutting on, and what we're seeing is, is we'll have a lot of baby boomers that may be single baby boomers that are moving into a two-bedroom simply because they have more furniture than, than would fit into one bedroom. And so they don't quite meet that same parking standard. So this is kind of a hybrid project. We build really three different product types. We build a garden, your typical garden product that we've seen a lot here in our community. This is what I consider more of a transitional product, which is a combination of a, of a garden and then a downtown mid-rise, which would be the third product type. If I'm doing my parking counts for the three, a garden product, I may go with a ratio of 1.75, 1.8. If I'm going to downtown mid-rise, I'm probably going to go around 1.5 spaces per unit. So in this, we're at like 1.65, not counting the street parking, and so we feel very comfortable with that, based on what we've seen, not only in our industry, but on other projects that we have, we currently got, so I hope that answers the question.
Mr. Bradley, what is your projected parking on, on-street parking, how many units? Mr. Bradley, what is your projected parking on, on-street parking? How many units?
How many?
Yeah, how many?
Seventeen. Seventeen or eighteen?
Yeah.
You know, what we're going for with this street parking, we've got, as you guys know, we've got so many hotels down there. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to differentiate, differentiate ourselves from the hotels. So we're trying to get this residential ground-floor walkout unit with an urban-type streetscape as you're looking down through there, to really get kind of a unique look down through there. And so, that's why we chose to go with the on-street parking.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal.
If the hotels have any problem with this, the hotels have any problem.
Nobody?
Yes.
In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
I think this is a extremely well-done project, and I think it will upgrade the image of the Murphysboro. And I think that I'm excited for having this in town, and that with that, I'll move for approval.
Second motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item C is a zoning application for approximately 14 acres located within the Liberty Cove subdivision. Be rezoned from RS-15 to RS-10, which is approximately seven acres, and from RS-10 to RS-15, another seven acres. Howard Wall and Jim O'Brien are the applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change request for property that's located along Leanna Swamp Road and Central Valley Road. The property is a portion of the developing Liberty Valley subdivision, and this portion is identified as the Liberty Cove, which is located within the Liberty Valley subdivision. You can see that the surrounding properties are zoned. RS-10, which is a single-family residential district, has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and RS-15, which is a single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. And then, you can see there are some properties that are located within the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. This subdivision is currently being developed and under development. And while the developer was making, or revising the plans, looking at the plans, they realized that there's a portion of property that they desire to be zoned RS-10 instead of RS-15, and that's the area that's shaded orange on the map before you. And they approached staff interested in having this property rezoned from the 15,000-square-foot lot to the 10,000-square-foot lot, so to decrease the lot size. Upon consultation with the planning director, they are now requesting something like a switch. So, for getting this additional property zoned RS-10 with a smaller lot size, they're identifying an area which previously had a smaller lot size to be a larger lot size. So it's, it's kind of like a swap. So the orange area would be going from RS-15 to RS-10, so decreasing the lot size. The purple area would be going from RS-10 to RS-15, increasing the lot size. And each of these are approximately seven acres, so they see it as a switch. And so, we encouraged them to kind of compensate for what they were asking for when coming to you. You have a presentation. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicants, and he would like to present some additional information. You should conduct a public hearing after which, and then, if you have any questions from us, we'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I don't have a formal presentation. I think Ms. Green explained it pretty well. Really wanted to swap some areas so that our RS-10 lots can stay consistent and around the other RS-10 lots, and the back portion of the property around the perimeter can stay RS-15 like the remainder of the property. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, Mr. Wall, is here as well if you've got any questions for him.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Wall? Thank you, Matt. Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the planning commission?
If there are none, I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D, annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 291 acres located along Blackman Road and Florence Road. Shelton Family and Saraswatt Family Trust are the applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is to consider a request the city has been, has received to annex properties that are currently located in Rutherford County. The request is, also has companion zoning change, which will be the subject to the next public hearing. This public hearing is to consider the annexation of the property. So I'd like to direct your attention to the maps that you have been provided, and you can see on this map, there's areas shaded blue. And these areas shaded blue are part of the area that's been studied for annexation. The parcels that are located between Blackman Road and Florence Road, the city has received petitions for annexation from both the Shelton Family and the Saraswatt Family. You can see there, there are some right-of-way of 840, Blackman Road and Florence Road, which were also included in the study area. Along Manson Pike, you can see there's a parcel that's been included in the study, and the parcel, if you can see the screen, I've got the little hand on it. This property is owned by, or this property is owned by a Blackman United Methodist Church. And because we were looking at annexing right-of-way, staff reached out to the church to see if they were interested in having that property annexed as well, and we could study it, and of course, and then see what effect that might have on city services. They responded that they would, of course, need to discuss it with their board, and then, they did, they did get in contact with Gary Whitaker, the planning director, and said they would like to be annexed. They have not provided us the petition for annexation. We've consulted with the legal department. They say we can go ahead and have a public hearing with me saying that they've given us a verbal affirmation. However, if they don't give us that petition before city council, we'll look at taking that parcel out, and then a portion of the right-of-way to make sure that it's not completely surrounded. But they've indicated they have a desire to be annexed. The, I think, part of that is because if it's property owned by church, they don't pay taxes anyways, so there's no real financial loss that the church, or obligation the church would have, but they would be able to obtain city services, which would be a huge plus for them. That's a matter of technicality, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. This property, of course, is surrounded by an incorporated area of Rutherford County, which is mostly zoned for, for single-family purposes. It's also located just north of State Route 840, and then, has frontage on both Blackman Road and Florence Road. When you see the plan later, you'll see that there are proposed connections to those, but of course, at this time, we're just looking at the annexation. Subject properties are currently zoned for medium-density residential in the county, which has an approximate lot size of 20,000 square feet. They've made a request to change the zoning to planned development. The city has studied this area, and will be able to provide services to the area upon the development of the property. So some of the services that aren't available now will be extended to the property by the developer when it's developed. Something that I had pointed out during your work sessions is that we were particularly concerned with the ability to provide sewer to the property, and they early on reached out to the Murphysboro Water and Sewer Department. They confirmed that they can get sewer across 840. The method that they're getting sewer across 840 will be only to serve this development. It won't be able to serve any other properties, but it will be able to obtain Murphysboro Water and Sewer, sewer service, which is important to the applicants. We've had the other departments study it as well, and will be able to provide services in a reasonable time. That's been provided in the plan of services. You will need to conduct a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, your motion will be to adopt, to recommend adopting the plan of services and to recommend approval for the petition of annexation. So there are two items in your one motion, and I just want to point it out, since this is sort of still a new process to us, that we've decided instead of having two public hearings, one for the planning, plan of services, and one for the annexation petition, we combine them into one so that it makes sense for everybody. But your motion will be for both the plan of services and the annexation petition. And if you have questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Representatives are here this, this evening. If you have questions from them, Mr. Whitaker did approach me yesterday wanting to make a change, another change to this map, and I'd like to appoint your attention to this map. And you can see the area shaded blue is all the area for which we've studied for annexation and which we're holding a public hearing on. The blue has two fingers that come out to Blackman Road. Mr. Whitaker is recommending that you leave out the right-of-way, and those are just rights-of-way that run along the rear of the lots that have frontage on Blackman Road. And so, these two fingers would not wrap around those two parcels. And we can amend that map if that's, that is your decision, and that's his recommendation. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before making your recommendation.
Okay.
Chairman. I will abstain from discussion and voting on this annexation application as well as the companion zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Does the applicant have anybody that'd like to speak pertaining to the annexation and plan of services?
I know that they want to speak with, regarding the zoning plan, the proposed zoning plan. Mr. Taylor, would you like to add anything with the annexation?
I'm done to talk, but I'll wait till the next.
Well done, Mr. Taylor. Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing. Now, this public hearing is pertaining to the annexation and the plan of services only, not the zoning. So, pertaining to the annexation and plan of services, the public hearing is now open. I'd like to invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal.
Yes, my name is Joe Gurley. I live at 3542 Morton Lane in Smyrna, and I represent the citizens of the ninth district, commission district of Rutherford County. In general, I don't have any problems with this annexation, but I have some concerns. One is the traffic, and that's what, that's what's been expressed to me in the last few days. I wasn't able to be at the community meeting due to commission meeting occurring at the same time. During the previous calendar year, the county did some minimal upgrade to Blackman Road. Part of that was due to the fact that during the previous four years, there'd been over 100 wrecks in that stretch of road. Those were statistics from, that the sheriff's department had gathered. So we worked with the county highway department to do some minimal improvements. Right now, as you probably know, there's commercial traffic coming from the Rogers Group that comes to that intersection. One positive thing about the annexation is that K through six, children in K through six will be going into city schools, which will take some of the load off of, of county schools, from that standpoint. But, most of those people will be going back down Blackman Road through that intersection and going to overall creek, or to Blackman High School. So I think that one of the things that really needs to be looked at by the planning commission, by staff, and by the developer, is the commitment to improve the roads that can handle the traffic. The traffic is already bad. As I said, 100 wrecks in the last four years, that's 25 wrecks a year. That's, that's pretty good. So I think, both there, and over on Florence, I noticed that the new entrance to the development will be very close to the existing entrance to the existing development. That comes over the overpass. It's a very short site radius, so that issue needs to be addressed there. So, primarily, my concern is both on Blackman and Florence Road. I realize that part of it will be in the county to, for the city to bring the roads up to standard, work with the county to improve it, and let's make it like it needs to be, so that both the current citizens there now and the future citizens will be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Anybody else?
Thank you, Board. My name is Jay Sloan. I live at 6026 Foothills Drive, dead ends into Blackman Road. I want to apologize in advance. I may be repeating some things that Commissioner Gurley has already spoke on. This proposed development's going to be a major change to our community. Issue that I foresee, like Mr. Gurley said, was the, with the addition of 771 homes, you're also going to have the addition of vehicles coming through. Simple math tells us that with two per home, we're looking at another 1,542 vehicles coming through there. I know there's an entrance also on Florence, but, you know, that, there can be some educated guesses made on how much traffic could be deterred onto Florence, but again, as stated, those are guesses. If you live or drive through the Blackman Road regularly, you're familiar with the problems the road poses. The road's very narrow. The traffic flow is quite frequent. The curve, there resides a curve south of the proposed entrance. I think one of the entrances, it's less than 100, 200 feet from the curve. It's had, as Commissioner Gurley said, more than its fair share of accidents. Then roughly, not only that, but roughly less than half a mile from the proposed entrances on Blackman, as you head towards the 840 access, there's a four-way stop where Blackman Road, Burntnob Road, and Manson Pike meet. Living in the community, I travel this intersection many times, sometimes multiple times a day, and I can attest it stays quite busy. Not only personal vehicles use this intersection, but as Commissioner Gurley stated, many buses. Not only Blackman High School, but we have the elementary school there. We have Brown's Chapel back on the other side of Blackman. We have Blackman Middle School, which my daughter attends as well. So we have quite a bit of traffic, personal vehicles, buses. And as he stated, the dump trucks with the Rogers Groups, which haul the gravel products, they frequent this intersection as well. At that intersection, it's a Blackman Market that is visited quite frequently by the vehicles, the buses, those that work for the Rogers Group, you know, trucks with trailers and whatnot. If you were to sit there any length of time, you see the amount of congestion that can occur. I'm on, I'm on board with Commissioner Gurley, as I, I feel like this would be a benefit to our community, but my concern obviously is the traffic and us being retroactive instead of proactive in trying to condense and handle the flow of that traffic in. Too many times, the problem is so great, we rush to be retroactive, causing us a greater burden. In the recent widening of the Blackman Road, that, we had a stop-and-go process where obviously, one side had to stop and be notified when to proceed. Living there, it caused somewhat of a headache, one that was manageable, but I can only imagine the headache that it's going to be caused if we decide to be retroactive on this, possibly additional 1,542 vehicles of a headache. So, that's, that's basically my concern. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Crystal Mallory, and I live at 3412 Laurel Mountain Road, also in the Foothills subdivision, and am in agreement with our commissioner and also the gentleman who spoke before me, but just want to get up and speak so that you know that there are a great number of us who are very concerned with our safety while traveling Blackman Road. I would encourage all of you who are not familiar with that area, if you haven't visited, or if it's been a while since you've been out there, before you vote, maybe you might go out there, and you might go during a rush hour time, or a school time, so that you can see the volume, because it is a substandard road today, and it has been for some time. The minimal improvements are appreciated, but they are very minimal, and the road needs a lot of work. Even without this development, it needs work. And the accidents that have happened, in a lot of cases, have been quite serious. I know last year, one person drove onto somebody's roof. In another case, people put giant rocks in their front yard because they wanted to protect their home, because a car either came close to their home or hit their home. I can't remember which of the two, but I'm in complete agreement with the two people who spoke before me, so I won't repeat all of that information, but I encourage you to visit and to take into serious consideration the safety of the citizens who travel those roads every day.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, yeah, thanks for letting us speak. David Hill, 210 Witt Drive. I'm in the Jamison Downs subdivision, and I'm actually past the widening of where they widened Blackman Road to where people cut through going back towards Alma Road in one-mile lane. That road has not had any work done to it, and my wife and I, who's here with me tonight, we had a head-on collision on that road. It's very dangerous. We, we were fortunate to be alive. We didn't have our kids with us. But I do want to note, there was a letter sent out to the, by Commissioner Brooks, the road commissioner, to the residents when they did the widening project, and one thing that it did state in that letter was, and I wish I had a copy, I didn't think it would be necessary, so I didn't keep it, but in that letter, it did state that the road did not meet the minimal requirement for the Rutherford County safety, and he did also note Brown's Chapel School, school buses and kids, you know, going back and forth to school, the high amount of traffic. So if anybody ever finds that letter, it does actually say out of his own words that the road doesn't meet the minimum county requirement for the amount of traffic and the, and the type of traffic. the type of traffic that's on it. So, I would again encourage that you look at that road because it's very dangerous, and there's going to be a lot of people cutting back up to Amal Road. They're not all going to go around that four-way stop and get on 840 or 24. They're going to go down there as well. So, the residents in our community are concerned about that as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Donald McDonald, 2104 Blackman Road, and I keep beating a dead horse, but this is really a situation we need to look into, and I have a proposal that might work partially anyway. I'll do my little speech here, and then we might bring up the diagram and be able to see what we're talking about, because I know for most of you guys, unless you've been out there, you don't have a clue what we're talking about. Presently, many days during our rush hour, the amount of traffic coming south on Blackman Road toward the intersection there at Blackman will be 1,000 to 2,000 feet long. People backed up trying to get through that four-way stop there at the Blackman intersection. With the Shelton property ultimately scheduled to have 771 houses and three entrances, we have to assume that two-thirds of the new traffic will come out on Blackman Road, a third coming out on Florence Road. Some vehicles will go north, but most will go south toward 840 and 24. If we assume an average of two trips a day for a working husband and wife or carrying kids to school, then when the subdivision is completed, and of course, I'm sure this, we're talking about 10 years before this subdivision will be completed, we'll have approximately 600 to 700 additional trips a day on that road with 1,200 to 1,400 movements in and out on Blackman Road. So, and there are other potential development properties in that area. Several acres are available to be developed and will be probably in that same general area along Blackman Road. Therefore, the road is congested and will continue to be congested for years to come if we don't do something about it. As you know, the County Road Commission will not condemn property, will not widen the road unless the right-of-way is obtained by donation, and we can't see donations of right-of-way on this stretch of road from the Shelton property to the four-way stop in the heart of Blackman. Based on the past history, when the city annexes a piece of property that joins the road, it will also annex the roadway for the control of the road. I assume that this will be the case here on the Shelton property. This then leaves a 1,600-foot section of narrow two-lane road from the Shelton property to the intersection of Blackman Road and Manson Pike, and this is another very antiquated section and will be overloaded as it is now. It is quite obvious that very soon, the congestion problem will have to be solved. A solution would be for the city of Murfreesboro to annex the roadway only from the Shelton property to the intersection, and then this would allow you to put a street light at the intersection and to make additions in widening that road, turning lanes. You could have a turning lane going right toward 840 and Veterans Parkway. You could have a lane going to the left on Manson Pike going toward 24 and Murfreesboro, and this would take a minimal amount of work and construction, and I recommend that we go ahead and annex the roadway only from the Shelton property to the intersection there at Blackman, and then as necessary, work on getting a traffic signal there as well as widening that road to whatever is necessary to get some turn lanes in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. For your comments.
Three minutes, thank you. John Beatty from Blackman. I'm half a mile to the other side of Shelton property on Baker Road, and that's my way to town, is coming through there, and it's just a wagon trail that has been, it's just been paved and upgraded, and the project in all, seems like a good project. There's a lot out there that's going to be developed next few years. The roads need updating, and we got an update of 18 inches on each side this past summer. We finally finished it all in November. It's because the buses passing and the mirrors were hitting, touching. That's how narrow we've got a little lead room off of that now. But the road, like Donald, the speaker before me said, that needs to be incorporated in the city, whether the developer pays for it, developer calls between, city and developer pays for it, like you do the sewer or water lines, whatever thing, and all that upgraded, because we know it's going to be an upgrade finishing on Manson Pike to where it's a three-lane to a five-lane. They already have the right-of-way when they built it, and then on a long-range plan, it was going on over to taking Burntob and going down Amal Road or back to 840 there. But that's our biggest concern is the road in that short section there of a half a mile or so. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Anybody else?
I live at 208 Heathrow Drive in Heatherwood Estates. I wasn't going to come up here, but nobody's mentioned Florence Road. I live going off of Florence, and right now, going into our subdivision, you get run over about every time you try and turn going in, come from either direction, and coming across the interstate there from where the far hall is over there. It's a curve there, and people can't see you, and they come flying around that curve. So, that is a dangerous place, too, and right now, you have to sit through two of the three red lights before you can get through there during rush hour and school zone hour. So, that's going to put more traffic there, and I do not know the number of wrecks, but I know there's been a gang of wrecks where we've had to go all the way back around, come in O'Nashville Highway to Florence to get home because it was going to be blocked for hours. So, I'd like to say I wasn't going to come up here, but nobody mentioned Florence. That is going to be another road that's going to have to be updated, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sloan, what's the name, Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Sloan.
What's the name of the street that you, to go into your subdivision off of Florence Road?
Heath, Heath...
Heathrow Drive. Heathrow Drive.
Heathrow's what I live on.
Heatherwood.
It's Heatherwood.
Heatherwood Drive, but Heatherwood subdivision, and that's on the road that goes in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services. Mr. Whittaker, do you have any comments, sir? I think one thing I know you need to comment on is Mr. McDonald's proposal on the annexation of the entire length of Blackman Road there, and why that cannot be affected.
One of the reasons that we had actually, I'd asked staff to revise the map, was to, in the future, allow for us, if warranted, to actually annex that four-way stop back to the Shelton property. Currently, if we actually annexed it the way the map was originally done, we'd create a donut hole, which wouldn't afford us the ability to later on come by and annex that 1,600 feet, I think somebody referred to, of the Blackman Road. So, this would actually give us that opportunity, as I've asked to be modified, to allow us to do that in the future. Also see that it would possibly or probably warranted to have the developers engineer to look at that intersection. We don't just put lights up. We have to have studies done, and enough studies. There are certain factors that go into whether you actually add traffic lights or not to see, and when and if it was warranted, then I'm sure we would look at doing that sometime in the future. As we all know, they won't build the 771 houses at one time. This project, or a project of this nature, depending on how the economy goes, could go from 10 to 15 years. So, naturally, these houses will be staged in and coming in, so it's not going to be an immediate effect of 700 houses on the Blackman Road and Florence Road at any one time. I think the city's got a great track record. As we've annexed property when warranted, we do go in sometimes in conjunction with the county. Sometimes the city just does it in the county, and we upgrade roads. I think we have an excellent history of doing that once warranted. In this case, I'm actually trying to set this up so in the future, we could come back if need be, annex that in to upgrade those, that 1,600 feet when it's warranted. Now, when that would be, I don't know. We don't have a study on that currently. I know the developer has proposed to make upgrades to the entrances on Florence Road, and I believe Mr. Matt Taylor is going to talk to that in just a moment as far as how extensive those road upgrades would be, but their entrances will be addressed not only on Florence Road but Blackman, and additionally, when we did Manson Pike, the city, we came in and we aligned. The reason that goes around the store the way it does the right-of-way is because we actually aligned Manson with Burntob. We also put turn lanes in to help that traffic in that area, and that was all in the county when we did that. So, we've made or taken some measures already to try to make that intersection there better, and if you go out, and I actually had asked the city engineer to go out and take a look at that, he did. I spoke to the city engineer earlier today, and basically, we had decided to, a future plan of, like I said, revising this annexation map for future improvements of that road when and if it's warranted.
The 1,600 feet from the southwest corner of the Shelton Farm to the four-way stop of Blackman Road and Burntob Road, Manson Pike, that's not part of our study area tonight, so that's really not on the table.
It is not.
And we cannot annex that without annexing about 14 or 15 other parcels there, which probably we do not want to be annexed, and with the state law like it is, we cannot affect that annexation anyway.
That is correct, but what we anticipate in the future is Mr. Beatty had referred to, that we know that there's more property out here. Eventually, we will have additional requests to be brought into the city and to be annexed, and at that time, it may be more appropriate that they would even provide right-of-way for us to make those changes.
Okay, comments on the traffic situation on Blackman Road?
I'd like to point out that the annexation of this property does not affect the traffic at all. Annexation does, and I think most of the comments probably are more correctly directed at the next public hearing with the zoning change request. Next public hearing would be to change the zoning of the property to allow 771 dwelling units. Annexing the properties will have no effect on the traffic because you're annexing what is there. So, I think that, you know, there are two public hearings, but I think probably those comments are more directly related to the next public hearing and not this one.
Good.
Ms. Green, refresh my memory on Florence Road. Did we not years ago make that a three-lane curbs and gutters and sidewalk continuous turn lane?
Sir, your memory is correct.
So, Florence Road has already been improved.
It has within, I think, within 10 years.
I think, I'm sorry, sir. Do we, how far did we complete Florence Road? Does it go all the way, went all the way to O'Nashville Highway?
I'll ask Mr. Balachandra if he remembers how far down it went, but I think it was in 2005 when we did it.
Good evening, Chairman. When we did the Manson Pike project, we did leave out the sections over the overpass. So, there are short two sections, one just the two-lane with a little shoulder over the 840 overpass and also the I-24 overpass, but the rest is all three-lane all the way to almost to Broad Street.
Thank you, Mr. Balachandra.
Sure.
I totally agree with the comments made on Blackman Road, but those arguments will be saved for a later time then. Right now, we need to make a decision on recommending annexation to City Council.
I do have a question regarding the plan of services. So, I heard you make the comment, and maybe reading or listening too much into it, that in reference to being able to get sewer across 840 to this project, but it would only be for this project? So, as we've talked about, the possibility of other land being developed at a later date, are we saying that as this area develops and people choose to be annexed into the city, are they not going to be able to tie into that sewer line? Or what do we mean by it's only for this development?
Right, typically, we would extend sewer lines that we require developers to take to the end of the property so that they touch adjacent properties. In this case, they're going to use a grinder pump, and it will only be, it will only have capacity to serve this property. So, if you look at some other properties that would be annexed, they couldn't tie into this.
So, they are going to have to cross 840 also, or?
It will have to cross 840. They'll have to come up with a different solution. And Mr. Taylor, do you have any additional information on the sewer?
In our conversations with Water and Sewer, each individual house will have a grinder pump. However, the streets will have collector sewer force mains, basically. We have not gone into detail on if they want any stubs and where they want those stubs, but you would have the ability to stub into an adjacent road, and they would put in their own pump. I don't know exactly what water and sewer, I don't think they've exactly decided on how they want that done, if they want that done, in my last conversation with them, so.
They mentioned the possibility of boring beneath Interstate 24, and I've got, if we'll pull the map up on the screen, this is a page from the plan of services. The cable department will, and you can see where the sewer is located today, and that's with the red lines, and the subject of property is shaded green, and so their response is in order for the properties north of Manson Pike to receive sewer service, a bore underneath Interstate 24 would be required. The new sewer line would tie into an existing 18-inch line on the south side of Asbury Road, and then if constructed, Murfreesboro Water Sewer Department would operate the grinder pump system and force main, and homeowners would be responsible for individual grinder pumps. The portion of the study area located south of Manson Pike, which is the church that we talked about, could be served with gravity sewer through the adjacent subdivision. So, it's actually coming from here, so they would bore under I-24.
I just want to make sure that we're not shortsighted with respects to knowing that this property may be annexed into the city, that we're not allowing people to hook up to whatever improvement that's going to be made to this particular. Granted, this developer will probably bear the majority of the cost to make that happen, but at the same time, I don't want to be shortsighted.
I agree, and it's a matter of not capacity. The capacity's there, it's the infrastructure's not there.
Okay.
So, it's not like they're gobbling up the capacity that would keep development from happening.
I'm with you.
It's just a fact that the infrastructure isn't in place.
Okay, any other questions? No, we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the annexation subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then one abstention.
One abstention, Mrs. Jones. Okay, the next public hearing is a zoning application for the same, basically the same property, 242 acres located along Blackman Road and property, 242 acres located along Blackman Road and Florence Road to be zoned, Shelton Springs PRD simultaneous with annexation, parks development is the applicant here. Ms. Green?
Thank you. This next public hearing is companion to the previous public, has a zoning, references a zoning change request for a part of the property being annexed. You can see that the church property located along south, located along the south side of Manson Pike is not included in the map. They haven't requested to change the zone of the property, so when, when and if they're annexed, it will come to the city with the interim RS-15 zone, which would permit the church. The zoning change request is for only the property shaded blue, and the request is to annex them and zone them PRD simultaneous with the annexation. And the PRD is planned residential district. As part of that, they have to submit a plan, a specific plan for the development of the property, and they've done so, it's included in your agenda materials, it's called Shelton Springs, if you'd like to refer to that. The surrounding properties to the west and south are in unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and some of the properties to the north were within city limits, and those others are within unincorporated area of Rutherford County. You can see State Route 840 runs along the southern corner of this property, and then you can see Interstate 24 is near the property as well. And those counties, those properties that are in the county are mostly zoned RM, which is medium density residential. You have the Shelton Springs PRD program book before you, and it hasn't been included. And in it, you can see that the maximum number of dwelling units proposed is 771, and that's for all 13 parcels that are requesting a zoning change request. So the overall property is 242 acres, and acreage is a little bit smaller than the annexation acreage, because this is just for this requested area, it excludes any right-of-way, so if you had questions about the difference in acreage, that's what it's from. So 242 acres with 771 dwelling units. If this property were zoned RS-15, which is the city's largest zoning district, it would be allowed to have a density of 2.9 dwelling units per acre. If it were zoned RS-12, which is the second below RS-15, then it would be 3.63 dwelling units. The density of 771 dwelling units on 2.42 acres is in between an RS-12 and an RS-15 zone, so the density that they are proposing is 3.2 dwelling units, which is less than an RS-12, but more than an RS-15. So overall, the lots are relative, the density is fairly consistent with what would be zoned in the county, but the difference is they've clustered the development, you can see that in the master plan, they have a mixture of different lot sizes, they range from 3,500 square foot lots that are alley-loaded, to 8,000 square foot lots and 10,000 square foot lots. They've got a mix of lots there with quite a bit of open space, so the way that they lay out, there's considerable amount of common shared open space, so rather than it being all within the single-family lots, it's commonly shared. The homes, there is a commitment to the home type made in this book, if it were zoned, it's a bulk zone, the city, of course, would not regulate the types of homes that could be there, but because this program book does have a specific program for those homes, they will be required to build them, and so, and Mr. Taylor will come in just a moment with a presentation, and I'm going to boil it down to this, they're masonry, they're mostly masonry, so that's brick, hardy stone or stone, or fiber cement board, and then they have some vinyl trim, so masonry upgraded, garages, and they have a commitment to minimum lot size. You do have the program book before you to consider, if you have any changes, you, of course, can approve it as submitted, approve it with some changes, or of course defer or deny it. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor to elect term to present the program for this, if you have any questions from either he or I after the public hearing, before or after the public hearing, we'll be glad to answer them, and otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing.
Chairman, may I interrupt just a minute?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
On the previous annexation request, I don't know that we actually clarified whether it was the map before you or as recommended by myself for the modification. That was not, I should have caught that.
Well, he included staff comments.
Was your intent for?
The revised map.
Map, okay, thank you.
I presume that the staff comments would cover that.
Okay, thank you.
But thanks for the point of order. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Lamb, good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, I am Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Bob Parks, the applicant on the project, and I do have a brief presentation over our proposed PRD that we're calling Shelton Springs, so. I want to start by orienting you to the site. I think all of you are probably familiar with this property to some degree. It's to the north of 840, south of 24, and then bounded by Florence Road on the east and Blackman Road on the west. It is currently owned by the Shelton property, the Shelton family, and was formally proposed to house the infamous Bible Park approximately 10 years ago. The far, the property currently is a 240-acre farm, does have a few structures isolated to the western half of the property. And as Ms. Green said, and with the public hearing we just had, it is currently out in the county, zoned RM. Here's a picture on the Florence roadside, this is approximately where our entrance would come in at. This is from the Blackman side. This is our, an example of some of the duplexes across the road opposite of us on, these are located on the west side of Blackman. Another picture of, on the Blackman side. The plan itself, as Ms. Green said, was requested to be a PRD. That PRD will allow for 771 single-family detached homes. We are not requesting any townhomes or apartments with this plan. All of that would be on 242 acres, which gives you a density of about 3.2 units to the acre. For comparison's sake, Berkshire, which is just to the south of 840, was just over three units to the acre, about 3.05, so very comparable in density between the two projects. Believe that Berkshire has between 800 and 900 total homes on that project, whereas here we've got about 771. All of our utilities will be underground. We will spread this across five different lot sizes. The smallest lot size will start at 3,500 square feet in size and go up to over 10,000 square feet in size as well. All of our homeowners here will be a member of the mandatory HOA, which will enforce the restrictions as well as maintain all of our open space on sites. I'd like to start with the smaller lots, the 3,500 square foot lots. These would be approximately 35 feet wide, about 100, 110 feet deep. There's a relatively small number of these lots, only about 36. We believe that there is a market for these, while being a limited market, we do want to introduce these to this project. There'll be a mixture of one- and two-story homes, start at a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size, and we are requesting some setback, setback variations for this portion of the development. The front setback would be the most extreme variation at 10 feet. With these being an alley-loaded project, we want that house to be close to the street, create an intimate feel, really create an ambiance as you come in on this northernmost median. The sides would be five feet, and the rear would be 10 feet, which will allow adequate access to come off the alley. The alley would either be, would be a private alley, we've not decided whether that would be in common space, or whether that would be in an easement on the lot itself, but in either case, it would be private and be maintained by the HOA itself. Building materials, all brick, stone, cement board siding. The only vinyl you'll see inside of Shelton Springs is going to be in the trim and soffit areas. We want to maintain a high-quality, long-lasting architecture for all of our lots here. Some examples of the homes, we are pulling these architecture from Winslow Park, which is right inside of the Berkshire development on the Blackman roadside. Here's an example of a one-story home and a two-story. We'd really relate this back to kind of a Charleston-esque type architecture, has that nice feel, you want that pulled close to the street, create a very pedestrian-friendly environment. The next section of lots is one of two options for a 6,000-square-foot lot size. These are located on the northern portion of the development, and are about 51 feet in size in width, and we're proposing about 237 of these lots. Again, this would be a mixture of one- and two-story homes, start at a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size, and will have sotted front yards on all of these lots. Here, the setbacks will be closer to what a normal single-family lot will have, has a 35-foot front setback, a five-foot side, and a 20-foot rear. We went with the 35-foot front here because we anticipate all of these to be front-entry garages, and the same building materials as I've previously mentioned. These homes here are modeled after what's currently being built in the enclave at Berkshire. This is, this is the newest section of Berkshire to come online. These homes have been built within the last year and a half approximately, and are located nearest the entrance off of Blackman Road. The next is also a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet in size, except for it's about 52 feet in lot width, and will be targeted at a different demographic. We anticipate these to be an age-targeted product. They'll still be a one- and two-story home, will also be a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size, and also have sotted front yards. These will have the same setbacks requested as we did for the previous section, and the same building materials. Here, the architecture, we pulled these home types from the reserve at Merrymont Springs. You can see decorative garage doors, a lot of intricacy to the, that architectural facade, a lot of variation in building materials on just that one elevation there. And the same thing there, just different materials and different colors. The next are the 8,000-square-foot lots. We have more of these than we do any, and really stretches from the northern boundary all the way to the southern boundary of our project. We're proposing 277 of these. Again, one- and two-story homes, these will start at 2,400 square feet in size, and sotted front yards, same setbacks that we had for the last two sections, and again, we anticipate these to be front-entry garages, and the same building materials. These homes are modeled after some of the newer homes that are being built in the village of Berkshire, which is over on the Brinkley Road entrance to Berkshire. Again, you can see decorative garage doors, a lot of variation in that roof line, a lot of variation in the building materials just on one facade. The largest minimum lot size we have, we 10,000 square feet in size, and we're proposing 115 of those. They're primarily concentrated on our southern boundary, as well as in the heart of the Again, one- and two-story homes, these are going to start at 3,000 square feet in size and go up from there, sotted front yards. Here, our setbacks are going to vary a little bit, we're requesting a shallower front setback at 25 feet, because we anticipate all these to be side-entry garages. We're saying that there's a minimum of a three-car garage here. They will have an option for one, to have a double side, and then one road-facing garage setback past those double cars, so the 25 will still provide the four cars in the driveway outside of the garage. Same quality materials. These homes are modeled after some of the homes inside of Merrymont Springs as well. There's a couple of examples. Amenities, as is, as with any project this size, we do need some amenities. Ours vary from having passive open space to more structured parks and pools. First two are some passive open space located on the southern portion of our development, as well as in the central part. These are heavily treed, they are sinkholes, they will also act as stormwater management areas for our development. The first structured park is a park on the northern boundary, this is located in the 6,000-square-foot homes. Because of the product here, we're anticipating this to be more family-oriented and small children, so we've planned for playgrounds and basketball courts to be located in this park. The next park is located more in the heart of the development, around the 10,000-square-foot lots, and closer to the age-targeted product there as well. And so appropriately so, we've planned for this to be a little quater area, be more geared towards sitting areas, and possibly a fountain. And our largest structured amenity would occur on the northern boundary, or Northern Boulevard entry, which would be a pool and cabana. In addition to those, we've also tried to address Blackman Road from a amenity and aesthetic standpoint. We did not want to just turn our back to Blackman Road, but we didn't want a lot of driveways coming out on Blackman Road either, so we have created at least 75 feet of green off of Blackman Road's right-of-way to our rear property lines. That 75 feet will be enhanced through a four-rail fence, as well as berms and landscaping all along our frontage along Blackman Road. And then at each of our three entrances, we'll have monument signage that will, and landscaping that will add to the character and ambiance as soon as you enter our development. Access, we've planned for three primary access points into our development, one of those being off Florence Road, and two of those being off Blackman Road. Each of those entrances will have left and right turn lanes provided into the development to help get our traffic off of Blackman Road and off of Florence Road. In addition, our entrances will have three-lane cross-sections where it meets those roads. We'll have an in, a left-out, and a right-out. Each of those entrances will have a median at the entrance, so as to start to set some of that ambiance along with the entry signage. The entry off of Florence, that median will drop off after about 100, 150 feet into the project and taper back down into a normal city street. The entrances and boulevards off of Blackman, that median will continue for about 900 to 1,000 feet into the property and terminate into a roundabout, and the other three legs will taper off into normal street sections. All of our streets in this development, with the exception of the alleys I mentioned previously, will be public city streets, have sidewalks on both sides. They will not have street trees, but they will, the medians coming off of each will have landscaping in those medians. We've also provided and anticipated two future street stubs, one of those to the north and one of those to the south. The project was fairly limited on where those stubs could go. The northern boundary was largely developed with the Heatherwood subdivision, and then to the south are smaller tracks. So working with city staff, we've identified these being the two prime locations and optimal locations for these future stubs and connection points. Myself, as well as Mr. Parks are here, if you'd like us to answer any questions now or later.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Question?
Mr. Taylor, did you say a turn lane at all three entrances?
Yes, sir, we'll do left turn lanes and right turn lanes off of Blackman, and the same thing off of Florence. What we have looked at on Florence, because of the proximity to the Heatherwood entrance, is we would actually build a left turn lane for both entrances there, because we could not get our taper to back down before we get back to the Heatherwood, so we'll actually be building a turn lane for them as well there.
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
Have you done a traffic study?
We have done a traffic study for those entrances to size and warrant those turn lanes.
Yes, sir.
Any other improvements to Blackman Road or Florence Road?
No, sir, we're not, we have not proposed any other improvements. What we would do for each of those is, as with any other city, city street where it does not have curb and gutter where we intersect, if our improve, we would do escrow based on our linear footage of frontage there, and then we would, in addition to our road improvements, the turn lanes.
Mr. Taylor, did I understand you that on the Blackman Road, that you have enough room to back that off for a future road improvement?
We have a minimum 75 feet between the existing property line or right-of-way and the back of our lots, so if the city desires us to dedicate right-of-way there, we could, we certainly have the room to dedicate additional right-of- additional right-of-way for that.
Would that be, would you be encroaching on this fence and all these other improvements that you're talking about if you did that?
It depends on how much right-of-way that was desired or required through there. Currently, it's not on the city's major thoroughfare plan, so we've not planned for any additional right-of-way, with the exception of the turn lane improvements that we would have to do. But, you know, we could certainly look at adding additional right-of-way. We could still do the same improvements, maybe just instead of it being 75 feet of green, maybe it's 60 feet of green.
Right.
We'll add that, they've done a traffic study, and the city engineer needs to review that, and the city engineer may have some additional comments, and they may have comments about the study, or they may require additional improvements. I don't know them yet. That's a part of the technical review that we expect to happen. I know that our traffic engineer had some questions about the study that he's going to want us to go back and look at. So any improvements, what they're committing to now, I think they're committing to from what the study is, but we may need the study to be revised to show additional information. And if that information says something else needs to be done, then they'll need to do that as well, based on the information in that study, and that would be something that the city engineer would look at.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right. We've heard your comments about traffic on the previous public hearing, totally in agreement with that, but we'll open this public hearing at this time to hear any more comments or suggestions pertaining to this proposal.
Jason O'Gan, 626 video drive. Just want to, just a few comments. I know that he stated that there could be right-of-ways off of Blackman and off of Florence, but again, that's only going to help with the merging off of Florence or into the subdivision and merging on, back on to Blackman or Florence. So it still doesn't help us with our situation as far as the traffic going back towards the gentleman lives on the opposite end, as well as the intersection down at Burt Knob. And also, as Mr. Whitaker stated earlier, we understand that, you know, it could be 10 years before this complex is full and whatnot, but one question I had, and I wanted you to think about was, what's going to happen when we have these trucks coming in that I'm sure there's going to be dirt, rot, whatnot, removed from this property, items brought into this property? Who's going to maintain our roads as far as when those, all those start coming in?
Thank you, Mr. White.
Where's the camera?
Do I need to restate my name?
Please, just for the recognition.
Yeah, Joe Gurley, 3542 Martin Lane, Smyrna, Commissioner for District Nine. You know, my real concern, I think what we've seen tonight is that, you know, Mr. Parks did a development that was recently approved in the county and in my district. They've been good to work with as far as addressing. I don't think most developers really want to create a traffic problem, because if word gets around in their development, there's a traffic issue, it's hard to get in and out of, there's not adequate turn lanes, they don't sell too many houses. So really and truly, I think the issue is not with the property along the proposed development, the problem is a bigger issue that I think the County Commission and the City Council is going to probably have to look at in the future, and maybe work together. And I'm open, very much open to that, to solve the problem of both those residents within and without the incorporated area of Murfreesboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley.
Hi, I'm Jean Hill. I live at 210 Witt Drive, Jamison Downs. My husband spoke earlier, and I just want to, again, reiterate the safety needs of widening that road. It was conveniently widened from Baker Road down to almost to the four-way stop that we've been mentioning, which was nice, and we much appreciate that. However, the other side of Blackman Road needs it desperately. Where Bass Road and Blackman Road end on the other end, where a lot of people travel back and forth getting to Ammerville Road, going to I-24, that is where we had our wreck that had on collision. And, you know, we also, that area also serves Stewart's Creek High School and Junior High. So you have buses going back and forth from there as well, which my son drives now, and literally scares me half to death when he's driving. So those are my concerns, and with the traffic study that apparently, from what I understand, has already been done, if that's warranting a turning lane, then obviously it would indicate to me that there's plenty of traffic out there that would indicate that need for widening the rest of Blackman Road all the way out to Ammerville Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Crystal Mallory, 3412 Laurel Mountain Road in Foothills. And a couple of things that stood out to me, if I understood from our meeting on Monday night, when the developer came to talk to us about the plans, the turn lengths, in my opinion, might be insufficient from the beginning, because they would only hold three to four cars, if I understood on Monday night correctly. And at heavy traffic times, like the start of school and the end of school and people getting to and from work, I don't know that that's going to give a whole lot of relief to people who are, I think the traffic's going to back up behind those three or four cars waiting to turn in, and still going to cause the worst congestion. I think it's wonderful that they want to put berms, fencing, and landscaping along Blackman Road, because they want to be nice to us. I really like that, but I'm afraid that space is more needed for the roadway to be improved as opposed to beautification. I'm not sure what you can ask the developer to do on the front end here tonight when you're making your decision, but I always think things are better to be done on the front end, as opposed for us to be told that they might be done on the back end. So if there is something you can do tonight to require the developer to take some responsibility for the roadway, I would encourage you to consider that, and would thank you if you would consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory. Anybody else?
David Hill, 210 Witt Drive. Just a quick kind of recap there and a clarity from what I said earlier. I hadn't heard very many people saying, "Just don't build the subdivision. We're all concerned about the safety of our families." And it's not from in front of that subdivision and to that stop sign that we may get a stoplight or whatever, it's the rest of that road traveling the other way to Stewart's Creek High School, to Ammerville Road, to One Mile Lane, to Bass, back into Baker. That's what we're really concerned about. It's a dangerous road, and I don't know that we can make the developer, you know, do anything about that, because that's not in front of his. It's great he's putting in that, and thanks, Mr. Parks, for doing that, but we're very concerned about our families and the traffic on that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Okay, I've got another question about Florence. Has there been a survey?
Give us your name again, please, just so we have it down. Your name again, please.
John Sloan.
Thank you.
208 Heath Road Drive.
Thank you.
Has there been a survey done at Florence and Brinkley and Manson Pike?
You're talking about a traffic study, sir?
Traffic survey.
I will ask after the meeting.
Because that is in the city. It's not in the county, that is in the city.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, now closing the public hearing. Mr. Sloan wanted to know about other traffic studies that have been done.
The only study so far that we have done has been for our entrances onto Florence and Blackman respectively. So we've not studied the intersection, either intersection. And that was a scope that was determined, working with the previous traffic director, Mr. Richardson, before he left.
Notwithstanding this development, something needs to be done about Blackman Road. The fact that this development is proposed is at least bringing it to the forethought of everybody's minds. I am very familiar with that area out there, I go out there quite a bit, and I know, I have friends, very close friends that live out there, and they tell me what all has happened to their property out there. So I'm very aware of it. So something has to be done, and hopefully the City Council and the County Commission can get together and come up with some kind of agreement. Actually, the development of this subdivision might actually assist in getting those improvements made to some degree. So in that way, you know, it would be good. I know the developer that's proposing this has a long development history in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County and the mid-state area, and has always been known to create first-class developments that really, you can look at Berkshire and see that as a good example. They really assist the community in upgrading its property values, for the most part. But this traffic situation's got to be addressed in some way, so we need discussion on it.
Mr. Chairman, this is a good opportunity for Commissioner Gurley and the county and the city to get together and look at it, and maybe at least improving the Blackman Road from, say, Baker Road on down to the four-way stop. And we've worked together on several projects in the past. If you look at Halls Hill Pike, that was a terrible road, and working together, we fixed that road out, what, four miles? And that was one of the most dangerous roads in the county. So I think this is an opportunity for the city and the county to work together on this. And the question I ask about the right-of-way, this particular project will have enough right-of-way to move that back 10 feet to expand the roadway. The problem is, you've got 10 or 15 parcels in the county that are from the edge of this down to the Blackman four-way stop. Now, if what Mr. Gurley said was that the county does not annex property, or take property, or buy right-of-way, that's a problem. So maybe the city should annex that, and then we would have the opportunity to buy the right-of-way from the individuals and fix that road in conjunction with the county. Is that feasible, Mr. Whitaker?
Well, it would be feasible, but it wasn't included in our study as far as annexation. And you are correct, one of the things that our previous planning, or actually, our traffic director used to say is, before you build a road, you've got to have a place to put it. And the problem here is that 1,600 feet, you've got all those parcels on one side that don't have any room to give up anything. The other side, there is a large track of land there, but the problem you run into is, you first have to have the place to put the road. It's one thing to make the improvements, but getting the right-of-way, I do totally agree, in front of the development, it would be easy to acquire that. The difficulty is going to be from the end of the development back to the four-way stop. One of the reasons that I have modified that map was to allow us a clear path, if directed in the future, to study extending that right-of-way. That would not be, as you all know, a decision that I would make. That would naturally come from the council and Plan Commission to direct us to look at
And I would mention there is going to be a similar problem going to the north of this proposed development, that there are, there may be some open parcels on one side of the road or the other, but I do believe there's quite a few single-family lots that are right on Blackman Road to the north of this property also.
I think it's Ms. Mallory, I believe, brought up a good point. She'd rather have something worked out on the front end, rather than promises for something to be worked out on the later end. And that might be very relevant in this case, because there is such a protracted problem right there with traffic on this road currently. And while I've heard nobody oppose this subdivision, all the concerns have been for public health and safety on Blackman Road itself.
I might point out, it was the city that straightened out the curve on Manson to Burt Knob, and aligned those roads up and put in the turning lanes, even though it was in the county. So I can assure you, we'll do our part in working on the road.
Okay. Other comments and questions?
I think this is a great opportunity. I live in the Blackman community as well. I live in Berkshire. That is a busy road. It's busy every day, 24/7, but I think this is a great opportunity for a good piece of property to go in out there to really help that community. But until the road changes, it really won't matter. And I think going forward, if the city could work out something with the county, we do more road studies, but I definitely want to make sure that we approve this today, but let it be known that we definitely need to do a traffic study.
Mr. Taylor, how long will it be before houses actually start being built? A year and a half?
Somebody asked me that at the neighborhood meeting on Monday, and I believe optimistically I said first part of the year. I think Mr. Parks may have laughed at me whenever I said that, but sometime in 2017, I don't have an exact date, but houses, 2017. We do have a lot of infrastructure to bring. We have to bore I-24, which is not going to be an easy process to go get the sewer, so it will be, you know, it'll probably be close to a year or more.
Well, could you repeat that again? What did you say about the I-24?
We got to bore under I-24 to go get our sewer.
He didn't mean to bore you.
Pretty boring when you're stuck in traffic, parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm sorry, we can't take any more comments.
My question about who will maintain roads, what are these constructs?
There was a question, and I hadn't got to that one, but we have inspectors, this, if annexed and approved, we have inspectors. They would be looking at the site development, the road construction. I can't speak for the county, but I can speak for the city. We have requirements to put up self-fences and that track in, track out, and the Building Coats Department has inspectors that also look at the home constructions to ensure that the debris stays on the lot, it's not tracked out in the street. So within the confines of the development, we constantly inspect to ensure that they don't track, I mean, there's rules and regulations to prevent that. And naturally, within the city limits, we would be inspecting that to ensure, because what we don't want, whether it's a county road or a city road, we don't want material debris to leave that construction site. And we constantly work with developers and home builders to ensure that that doesn't happen. Now, I'm not going to tell you it doesn't, but when it does, we do notify them and require them to clean it up. And we've been doing that for several years, since stormwater came in, and I'm going to guess that's 10 years ago. But we have an active stormwater enforcement to prevent that from happening. So it doesn't matter what the access roads are, whether it's county or city, we want it maintained in that development. And I hope that answered his question.
And they're welcome to call the city engineer's office if they see that happen, and we have them clean it up almost within a day or two.
Okay. What are the wishes to this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion is made to approve, subject to all staff comments. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made to second it. All in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That will be a recommendation to the City Council. This process will be repeated again in front of the City Council for both the annexation and the subdivision. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and thank you for the want of attention, of course. And thank you very much for the few folks that came to speak tonight. Moving on to the next public hearing, we'll have an annexation plan of services and an annexation petition for approximately 31.9 acres located west of Manchester Pike. Swanson Development is the apt. Mr. Plummer.
Thank you once again, Chairman Lamb. Our next public hearing is an annexation request. It's for property located west of Manchester Pike and north- It's for property located west of Manchester Pike and north of Jovi-Jackson Parkway. Parcel itself has frontage on Manchester Pike, but the front portion of the property on Manchester Pike is not included in this annexation petition. It is only the portion of the property, the southern, probably 75% of the parcel that is in the purple color on the map before you, kind of a triangular-shaped piece of property. You can see it is directly to the north of the interstate warehousing tract, and the interstate warehousing developer has the property under contract at present and would like, they would like to purchase the property for future expansion of the interstate warehousing development. There's a companion light industrial zoning request simultaneous with annexation, which is the next item on the agenda, but this first public hearing will be for the annexation of this property only. The property is undeveloped. There are no, there are no principal structures on the subject property. The, as I mentioned, the applicant has filed a request for light industrial simultaneous with annexation for future expansion of interstate warehousing. The subject property is contiguous with the existing city limits to the south and to the west. It is also within the city's urban growth boundary, and included with the agenda is an annexation plan of services, which indicates that the services can be provided to the subject property upon annexation, and no right-of-way is included with the annexation. One point to make, the frontage on a public street for this particular parcel is not included in the annexation. You'll see that the frontage is actually along Manchester Pike, so if this property is purchased, if it is transferred to the adjacent property owner, it wouldn't need to be properly subdivided because on its own, it would not have frontage on a public street, so it wouldn't need to be re-subdivided to be incorporated into the interstate warehousing tract. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Clyde Roundtree and Mr. John Harney are here representing the applicants, if you have any questions for them regarding the annexation as well.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Now that I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? I close the public hearing. No questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item G, a zoning application for approximately 31.9 acres located west of Manchester Pike to be zoned light industrial simultaneous with annexation. Swanson Development is the applicant. Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the companion zoning request for the subject property. As I mentioned, it is requested to be zoned LI, light industrial simultaneous with annexation. Property is 31.9 acres, and as I mentioned previously also, it is directly to the north of the interstate warehousing development, and the developers of interstate warehousing have a contract on the subject property in order to acquire it for future phases of the interstate warehousing development. At this point, the representative of interstate warehousing has indicated that they do not have concrete plans for how they want to develop it. Could possibly be tractor-trailer parking and storage, or there could possibly be construction of buildings on the subject property in the future as well, but nothing is, nothing is concrete as far as how they want to develop the subject property. The property is zoned RM, medium-density residential in the county, and they have requested the LI zoning classification simultaneous with annexation. The surrounding zonings and land uses, the property along Manchester Pike just to the east, northeast of the subject property are primarily large, single-family residential estate lots fronting on Manchester Pike. To the south of the subject property, you'll see the PRD, kind of to the south, southeast of the subject property, that is the Sunset Ridge Planned Residential Development, which was originally developed by Mr. Denny Hastings and has since transferred to Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Lloyd. It is a residential development which consists of both single-family attached product, the Aurora Place condominium development, as well as single-family detached, the Everbright Point and Del Sol Commons subdivisions. Also, as I mentioned, interstate warehousing is directed to the south of the subject property. Directly to the west of the subject property is our several, or a collection of parcels zoned light industrial. You'll recall that in 2015, we, the Planning Commission approved a site plan for a development called Standard Distribution, which was going to be a warehousing and transport business for food products. To the north of the subject property are several large tracts. For example, to the northwest of the subject property is a larger tract that is undeveloped, and once again, there are some large estate lots on Manchester Pike with single-family residences on them. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this zoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and as I mentioned, Mr. Roundtree and Mr. Harney are both here if you have any questions for them.
Any questions? If not, yes?
I might wanna make the comment that my motion that I made previously was subject staff comments because there might be that adjustment to get the access to the roadway, so I fear Gary was gonna come after me if I didn't do that. That was my intention to the motion, so.
Okay. Good point of order there. Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question, Mr.
Yes, sir.
The LI zoning is consistent with lots of other properties out there, and there are some heavy industrial properties out there also?
There are several properties that are zoned heavy industrial, the NHK seating and the, I believe, Amazon is zoned heavy industrial as well, as well as the property that was rezoned last year for the key oil development, a little bit further to the west along Jovi-Jackson Parkway. There is also a great deal of light industrial property fronting on Jovi-Jackson Parkway with various industries such as interstate warehousing, Perfect Equipment, Fertoria, Schwan Cosmetics, and a number of others as well.
So this is consistent, this zoning is consistent with many other zonings similar?
It's consistent with the zoning for the properties that are located directly on Jovi-Jackson Parkway, as well as some, for example, along Elam Farms Parkway that are a parcel or two removed from Jovi-Jackson Parkway as well.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no other questions?
Mr. Blumley, do you have any concerns with lighting on this property down the revenue when its development begins on it, or do you think all those concerns can be mitigated?
We will make sure, if the, if this property is developed, we will make sure that the property is compliant with our lighting standards and the zoning ordinance, which would regulate things such as the maximum lighting levels at the property lines, the way that the light fixtures are designed to minimize glare onto adjacent properties. So certainly, there are concerns that there would be lighting spillover and glare onto those adjacent properties along Manchester Pike, and we will work to make sure that those concerns are mitigated in the addressing of our minimum requirements for lighting when a site plan comes in.
Any other questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 30.6 acres located along New Salem Highway. World Outreach Church and Jackson Family General Partnership are the applicants. Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our final annexation study of the night is property that is located along both the north and south sides of New Salem Highway. Along the south side of the property, along the south side of the highway, the petition was made by World Outreach Church. You recall back, oh, about 10 years ago or so, when we annexed the World Outreach Church parcel, the main campus, we did leave out the property to the north of Spence Creek, and this would allow for the Jackson Family General Partnership property, which is the property along the north side of New Salem Highway, to remain in the unincorporated county. So there was a sliver here at the intersection of River Rock Boulevard that was left in the county, I think probably about a 50 or 60-foot sliver, as well as the area on World Outreach Church's campus north of Spence Creek that enabled the Jackson Family General Partnership property to remain in the unincorporated county. But we have received an annexation petition from World Outreach Church for the remainder of their main campus tract, and this would include the area north of Spence Creek, as well as the remainder of their bridge going over Spence Creek at the intersection with River Rock Boulevard. And the impetus for World Outreach Church requesting the annexation of the rest of their property is that they would like to construct a sign on their bridge, and where they want to put the sign is currently in two jurisdictions. Half the sign would be in the city, half the sign would be in the county, and the city and the county have different sign regulations. For the simplification of the construction of the sign and the administration of sign regulations, they have requested that the remainder of their property be in the city limits, and so that is the primary reason why they have requested annexation. Along the north side of the subject property, or the north side of New Salem Highway, is property, two parcels, one of which is owned by Mr. George Jackson, and the other of which, the larger of which, is owned by the Jackson Family General Partnership. They have submitted annexation petitions to annex their property as well. And from an annexation standpoint, and from the standpoint of providing city services, we see this annexation request as a positive because, as you can see, the, for all intents and purposes, this property is surrounded by the city limits with the exception of that little 60-foot strip that is, that is by a technicality not fully encircling the subject property. So what this will do is it will provide consistent city limits from the heart of Murfreesboro out to just east of Kason Lane. So all the property, or not all of the property on both sides of the highway, but all of the highway will be in the city's jurisdiction, so there will be no confusion over who provides services in the event of a wreck, whether there be the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department. Also bringing Mr. Jackson's property in, which has a house on it, as well as some accessory structures, if there were to be a fire or the need for emergency first responders from the Fire Department or the Police Department. It would simplify or make the city limits more consistent to determine that the property is in the city limits itself. There is a companion zoning request on the Jackson Family property on the north side of New Salem Highway, but there's no companion zoning request on the World Outreach Church property. So the zoning public hearing will be the next item on the agenda. This is simply the annexation, and included in the annexation study is the remainder of New Salem Highway in this particular area, which amounts to about 1,050 linear feet of New Salem Highway right-of-way. According to the plan of services prepared by the planning staff, we will be able to provide services to the subject properties upon annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this annexation petition and plan of services. Mr. John Harney and Mr. Clyde Roundtree are also in the audience representing this application, if you have any questions for them, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Blumley or for the applicant? Okay. No questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, close the public hearing. Last call for questions before we call for a motion.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. And the final public hearing of the evening is a zoning application for approximately 25.4 acres located along New Salem Highway to be zoned commercial fringe, which is approximately seven acres, and RM16, which is approximately 18.4 acres simultaneous with annexation. Jackson Family General Partnership is the applicant. Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The subject property is the north side of, or is the northern property that we just considered for annexation totaling 25.4 acres. As you mentioned, there is a request for seven acres of CF zoning, which is the area colored in orange right at the northeast, northeast corner of the intersection of River Rock and New Salem, and the area colored in purple is the area that is requested for RM16 multifamily residential with a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre in the area that is colored purple. The subject property, as I mentioned in the previous public hearing, is mostly undeveloped and used for agricultural purposes. However, there is a single-family residence on the property and an outbuilding that used to be used as a veterinarian's office, but is currently used as, to house small group functions for World Outreach Church, according to the applicant's representative. Subject property is zoned medium-density residential in the county, and they have requested the companion zoning request for the property if annexed. The adjacent property that World Outreach Church owns to the north, northeast of the subject property is zoned RM16 and was zoned that way in 2011, as well as Commercial Highway. You'll recall that back in 2011, we did hear a request, and that request was approved to zone the church's property to Commercial Highway and RM16. To the north of the subject property is zoned RZ, and that is the Sawyer Green subdivision. It's a subdivision of single-family attached zero-lot line homes. To the west of the subject property along River Rock Boulevard is the Olympic Springs subdivision, which is, has properties that are zoned RS15 and RS12 and are developed with single-family lots. Directly across River Rock Boulevard to the west from the CF zone, from the requested CF area are two institutional group assembly uses. There's the Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall, as well as the River Rock Baptist Church. And also, and of course, directly across the street from the subject property is the World Outreach Church main campus, which is zoned RS15. The property is contained in the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, and the Salem Pike Land Use Plan recommends that the subject property develop as institutional cultural worship, which is defined as all cultural and worship uses provided that the scale, operating hours, and traffic impact are compatible with any nearby residential uses and scale. The proposed RM16 and CF zones would allow most cultural and worship uses, however, because the RM16 and CF zones also allow a variety of other types of uses, it might be argued that the zoning request is not generally consistent with the map's recommendation. Despite the recommendation of the map, however, the text of the plan does recommend that commercial uses be clustered in conjunction at intersections of major thoroughfares. One might make the case that the intersection of New Salem Highway and River Rock Boulevard would be appropriate for a neighborhood commercial node to serve the surrounding neighboring residential uses. The proposed RM16 zoning request would serve as a transition from the proposed CF zone at the intersection to the adjacent Sawyer Green subdivision to the north, and would continue the existing RM16 zoning to the east, which was approved in 2011, and also directly abuts the Sawyer Green subdivision as well. Because of the narrowness of the map's recommendation for institutional use and the recommendation of the plan's text to locate commercial nodes at major intersections, the Planning Commission may see the request as an appropriate deviation from the land use map's recommendation. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then discuss the matter and whether or not it would be appropriate to deviate from the Salem Pike Land Use Map and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Harney and Mr. Roundtree are here, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Mr. Blumley or the applicants? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
I live at 155 Spence Creek Lane, and I'm delighted that a reference has been made to the Salem Pike Land Use Map. That project was well-known in my community. There were many meetings, many of us went to it, and we developed, along with Dr. Jackson, a plan for this area, which was a compromise of a variety of interests. That is an important map. These kinds of maps are important for our cities and for our counties. Now, it has been absolutely clear in the presentation, which Now, it has been absolutely clear in the presentation which was just made that the request for rezoning violates the spirit and the intent of the map for which Dr. Jackson was a participant in drawing up. These kinds of maps are essential for the long-term health of our communities. If we continue to willy-nilly and whimsically violate long-term plans, what does that say about the integrity of our long-term process? It makes it a farce. The integrity of our long-term plans is at stake in this decision and decisions like it. This area is not near a node, it is not at an intersection. It was absolutely clear, there is no ambiguity in the plan whatsoever, what this land was intended to be. And yet now you are asked to violate that plan. I'm disappointed in the Jacksons for doing this, but that is their decision. It is the integrity of this body and of similar bodies in the cities of Tennessee and the counties of Tennessee, whether or not we are going to have long-range plans that actually mean something. Do they have teeth or can they simply be abrogated? It's a very important decision and I urge you to deny this request for rezoning.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Matthew, put the map back up on the screen, please.
Mr. Roundtree, you can come forward if you'd like to.
The cable department could put the map on the screen, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Roundtree.
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Hudson Steel Engineering. Just like to reiterate what Matthew had presented. There was sensitivity in terms of the size and quantity of land that was allocated towards the CF. Currently, I did receive one or two phone calls, more out of curiosity about what was going to be placed on the CF zoning. And there's no application at this point in terms of, there's no site plan, there's no business, there's nothing that's been specifically stated about being on that piece of property. But the land allocation was adequate for, you know, the possibility of a convenience store, something along those lines on that corner. The the RM zoning was really designed, just as Matthew mentioned as well, as a buffer. The land allocation was consistent with the adjoining uses. We didn't make it all CF, there was no intention of making it all CF. We definitely knew there had to be a transition zoning in regards to the single-family to the north and also to the RM zoning also to the north. So we just wanted to, you know, make you realize that the percentage of portioning of the land was was sensitive to the surrounding community. Therefore, we wanted to make sure that we had a buffer consistent with the surrounding neighborhood as well. So with that, I just want to bring explanation, there's no specific use for the CF, but the size of the lot, the land that was allocated was specifically to be sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood as well. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Young, do you have a question, sir?
Well, he took it off. I can't see that one over there, but I can see this one over here.
We'll get it, we'll get it, there you go. Why don't you stay up, Mr. Roundtree, just in case Mr. Young has a question for you?
Is, is, Mr. Chairman, is not the CF, the RM16 just a continuation of the RM16 that's already been zoned that way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And would the CF serve as a buffer between the RM16 and the, what's the name of the road that comes out?
River Rock.
River Rock.
Well, the, I think the RM16 would actually serve as a buffer or a transitional zone from the CF to the RZ. It's it's kind of a step down in intensity, the commercial right at the corner. And I lived just about two blocks from there for 11 years, traveled that road every day and I can attest to the commerce, the traffic that that travels there on River Rock Boulevard. And so the CF is intended on the corner as a node of commercial. The CF does prohibit some of the more obnoxious commercial uses, auto repair, auto sales, things with outdoor elements that might not be compatible in a, in an area near residential uses, but it does allow some of the convenience type of commercial uses, such as convenience stores, restaurants, retail, things of that nature. And then the RM16 is typically seen as a transitional zone from commercial back to single-family residential. And the RZ is a high-density, single-family residential zone, so you would have CF and RM16 and then RZ and then back up to the RS10, which is in the Caseon Grove subdivision north of, north of the Sawyer Green subdivision.
Does anybody have a clue where we are on the fixing of 99?
I would prefer that to Mr. Balachandra.
He's going to tell me, don't hold my breath.
I think that's one reason Mr. Richardson retired.
Good evening again. As far as we know, there are no current, you know, funding plans for Highway 99. It's not in the next three-year plan. So hopefully next year, when our legislators get together and decide the next three years, hopefully it will get on, get on that plan. But right now, it's not on the next three-year plan.
Thank you, Mr. Balachandra. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I do understand what Doug's saying about being a continuation of the RM16. That looks perfectly logical. I'll also refer back to a comment that Doug has on occasion made of, is that where you would build your wow home? And with the traffic and congestion that Salem Highway and River Rock Boulevard carry there, that's not where I would think that the wow home would belong. So to use that property with that amount of traffic flow as a commercial fringe zone does sound appropriate, even though it is a deviation from what the plan might presume that it should be used as. But we're constantly looking at, no matter what the zoning was at one time, you have to realistically look at how the area has developed and what the traffic flows are. And I don't think that's inappropriate, what the proposed use of the property is. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with it and I think it really would be the appropriate usage.
Is that your motion?
Would you like to make a motion? Are you on the roll?
You're on the roll? I'll make out a motion.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Good job, Eddie. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. I appreciate everybody that came and participated in this today. The only thing we have left is staff reports. Mr. Whitaker?
I have no staff reports.
You have no staff reports, we stand adjourned.